This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, let us call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for August 19th, 2025 at 6 o'clock PM. And if we could manage to all together stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance? I'm sure we won't all be in unison, but we'll give it a try.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergoing indivisible
and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So we have three of us here tonight. John is away on business, so Stephen, Ellen, and myself are here, and we will see if we can get through this agenda. Do we have anybody here for Citizen Speak in the audience? I can't totally see. So somebody let me know if anybody needs to speak. If not, I have just a message to share from Tammy. Those of you that were in town on Saturday, hopefully you came to celebrate Southampton. It was quite the event. It's a little warm, I have to admit, later in the afternoon, but nonetheless. Tammy couldn't be here tonight, but she and her crowd there from the Southampton Historical Society really wanted to sincerely thank everybody who participated to make Celebrate Southampton be exactly what it was, which was pretty darn incredible. Apparently, as they do their headcount, they were able to give out 675 popsicles and about 950 people in attendance from 27 different places. So that's a huge number. I'd say that's double what we had last year practically. And so just a huge thank you from all of that team for all of their hard work, all the businesses that contributed, all those that volunteered to help. It was a great, great event for Celebrate Southampton, and the weather cooperated as well. So thanks, everybody. Hope you had a great time, and see you again next year if we have the energy to do it again. Hopefully so. All right. Anybody else there for Citizen Speak? All right, then let's go into the agenda. I believe we have a couple of appointments tonight. Stephen, would you like to take one on the Building Department, and I'll have Ellen do the other one on CONCOM?
Sure. I move that Glenn Rida be appointed Plumbing and Gas Inspector, a new appointment, a one-year term to expire June 30, 2026.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second that.
All right. All those in favor will do a roll call vote because I'm hybrid-ing in.
Johnson.
All those in favor?
DeBruin, aye.
Falls aye. Okay, passes. Thank you. And then Ellen on the next one?
And I make a motion to appoint Paul Bousso, a new appointment for a three-year term to the Conservation Commission to expire June 30th of 2028.
Second.
Okay. All right. Is Paul, he also goes by Brad. Does he happen to be in the audience tonight or not?
Are you Paul?
Yes.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Good, yeah. Come on up and introduce yourself for a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
We don't, we won't put you quite on the, on the hot plate.
Well, you know, you're welcome. I go by the name of Brad, and I've served the town before, previously on the Hampshire Regional School Committee for about 13 years, and then on the Town Energy Committee, but that's a long time ago. And I'm retired, and I have time, and I believe it's everyone's obligation to, you know, as a citizen, to volunteer and help out. And this is an opportunity to do that, and I'm glad to be able to step forward to do that for the town.
Thank you.
That's great. We really very, very appreciate that, Brad. Anybody have any questions of Brad or anything?
Anything in your background, personal profile that motivates you in the direction of CONCOM?
Well, I'll tell you, just a little story about my history in Southampton. I live on Glendale Road, and I live across from the Clearwater area. And as long as I lived in Southampton, which is 37 years, I've walked those trails. I've walked in the woods back there. And I was surprised that the town decided to make that part of its conservation lands five, six years ago. And I really welcomed it because it meant that I could continue to walk there, and so could my neighbors. So that sort of spurred me, gave me an interest in preservation and conservation. So that's, that's part of the motivation behind this.
Thank you, Brad.
Sure.
Very good. All right. I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor. Could I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Johnson, aye.
DeBruin, aye.
Falls aye. All right. Congratulations, Brad. You are our new CONCOM member, and you'll get a letter from the Town Administrator's Assistant, and then we'll have you swear in with the town clerk sometime in the coming days. And then before your next CONCOM meeting, you'll just need to swear in.
Great. Thank you, Chris.
Good. Thank you very much for stepping up. Great to have you join us. Okay, I think that's it for those appointments, reports. Scott, Town Administrator Report?
So we had a great meeting with, first initial meeting with Jamie Farnham and Casey Bick of the Division of Local Services Financial Management Resource Bureau on Thursday. We spent probably about three-quarters of a day with the financial team. Just scratched the surface. There's a lot of stuff that we're going to have to be working on over the next six to nine months. They're going to be providing a lot of virtual, a lot of in-person support throughout this time. They're going to kind of forego a lot of the formalities and get right to bullet points and calendars and not, you know, the traditional report that they spend a lot of time making look fancy rather than the nuts and bolts of it. So that's kind of the situation that we're in. I think that we are starting to, with Megan on board, I think we're starting to really have a good vision. We've identified a lot of places that we can work better internally already, but also a lot of places that we're going to have to talk about externally, in relationship with Norris, relationship with Hampshire Regional, how we can better improve things because it's all, it's all one, ultimately one big organization that is all interdependent. So we're looking forward to it. It was myself, Megan, the Assistant Treasurer, Angie, Tom, the Assistant Accountant, Bradley, as well as the Accountant. So good team, and we're just scratching the surface. I did put some bullet points.
Scott, sorry, Scott, sorry. How long will they be with us, Scott? Sorry?
Probably about six to nine months.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to take a while. Most of the work will probably be done in the first three months, and then it'll be consistent updates and follow-ups to make sure that we're on track.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Is our scope of work hammered down? Or is it evolving?
It's, it's kind of diving in to see what's wrong. So it's, we're focusing on the Treasure Department, Treasure Collectors first, but that's going to eventually expand to other financial departments.
Let me turn my question more practical. We're looking ahead to a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
Yep.
Will we have any new information or insights or more specifics about what this team will be working on?
Hopefully by the ninth we will.
Okay.
At least a few bullet points to.
And we're settled on the ninth? The joint meeting?
It looks like that's going to work for the most people just because we have, we have a meeting on the second, the week before, and we get into special town meeting. So we're getting kind of a little bit compressed for time in September. So I know John may not be able to make it, but I know the finance team could, so.
Okay. Four Jan.
So speaking of the ninth, I put some proposed topics to talk about. FY '27 budget calendar, to start planning that out over the next three to four months. Schedule our quarterly finance meetings, and we'll probably want to pick a specific couple of dates over the next year or two, just so that we can start reserving them, or pick maybe the third Thursday of every month or something like that. The FY '27 budget guidelines, we should start developing both for municipal and the school department. You know, what the maximum is that they can do increases, what, you know, salary increases, capital increases, things like that, 1, 2, 3, 4, 500%, whatever it is. So the other big thing is the health insurance update, which we're going to have a little bit more information slowly but surely. It might be an executive session depending where we are. But I think that's going to be a big topic in getting the Finance Committee involved. It's going to be important because we're going to have to do some Band-Aid work at special town meeting for, for the health insurance. Talk about the DLS visit as well. Special Town Meeting, we have a few items that I'll talk about later on that might involve the FinCom, Free Cash update, our audit status for '23 and '24. And Megan hopefully would be able to provide a borrowing update for Zio College and as well as some of our other investments, our other debt service and things like that, so. I mean, if there's anything else I should add or subtract, or, you know, just let me know.
Cool. It's great to have her aboard.
The Hazard Mitigation Plan will be, is posted online and be for next meeting. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is taking the lead on the outreach and the advertisement of it. There is a grant that I'm not going to go into specifics because the state has asked not to go into specifics until they announce it, but you can see it's a, it's a good grant, and there'll be an announcement shortly on that. Then I do want to welcome our new neighbors, Kathy and the Traveling Yoga Company, who are across the street. They had our ribbon cutting last night, and they presented, they donated town some comically large scissors, which I hope we can use in the next couple of years with some of our upcoming projects.
Building projects?
There's a lot of hard work and a little bit of luck, we'll be able to use these for a lot of ribbon cutting, so.
That's great.
A lot of bling there.
And then next meeting, just as a reminder, we'll probably have to do a lot of special town meeting, just formally call the special town meeting, open up the warrant, and I'm going to talk to council to see if we can call the special election pending approval of town meeting early so that we don't have to meet after the special town meeting if we can pre-approve the vote. So if that, that would just save an extra meeting, so it'd make it a little bit easier. And that's it.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Anybody have any questions of Scott on those, those updates? I just have one, Scott, that you didn't mention. Where are we with the ADA update study?
They have completed their site visits, and it'll probably be a couple of months when they put together the final report. They've, I can double check.
And their final report would give us recommendations of areas that need to be repaired or fixed or something, and where we might look for grant money, if that was at all possible?
Yep. Yep. So they're going to ask to schedule a presentation before the Board of Select, Select Board, once the plan is completed and sent a final draft. Should I see what the timeline would be? Yeah, I think it'll, it'll be a couple of months, but I can't find it. So.
Good. Well, I'm glad to hear that they're underway at least. That's good.
They did say nothing unusual that they haven't seen in other towns, so.
Yeah, I'm sure. Okay. All right. Any Select Board reports? Stephen, have you had any meetings in the last week or two?
Not that I recall, but next couple of days are busy. So Wednesday night, Open Space Committee, Thursday night, Housing Authority. Housing Authority is by Zoom, and you can learn more about either of the meetings on my town government.
Great. Okay. Great. And Ellen, I know, don't know if you had a chance yet to get to a meeting. We, we did the assignments on liaisons at the last meeting, which I believe I understood everybody agreed with, basically, so with no changes on that. Feel free to just keep informed of the meetings that are happening, or maybe you've already attended one?
I think there are a couple next week. I think it's the 26th, I think Conservation, and I think the Board of Health meets next week as well, so touch base with.
Yeah, and Community Preservation might meet too? I'm not sure.
I think, I think that is as well, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. All right, great. All right. Well, nothing, nothing on my side. We haven't had any meetings, or I haven't been able to attend any meetings if there were any, but I think we've had a quiet couple of weeks here on my side. So let's just jump into new business. So Scott, you started talking a little bit about the special town meeting. So just let's start with that and see what we're talking about in terms of what we need to do.
So I did ask all the boards and committees to try to get any, to at least reserve a spot on the warrant by next week. So far, we have, obviously, the big one is the senior center debt exclusion. That's going to be the, obviously, going to get the most attention in the spotlight. There are a lot of housekeeping things that we have to do, transfer of funds for the health insurance. Once we get into a little bit more details about that, how we're going to cover, we are in a deficit of, you know, the $350,000 this year to cover the health expenses. So if we don't do that special town meeting, or at least partially, we're going to have to figure it out at the annual town meeting. The Health Department Select Board with the addition of the new health agent. So Claudia's doing a great job, but when we approved her position, there needed to be a transfer of funds to cover the rest of her salary. So we have a few areas that we put into that. We are working, I talked to email John about some PQB changes, as well as the Capital Improvement Committee changes and FinCom changes that we had mentioned last year prior to the annual town meeting. The CPC is working on land acquisition. Conservation Commission has a bylaw update that changes it from shall to may, make certain changes. Actually, where's Bradley? Okay. And then the Select Board, we're just going to have our regular previous years bills unpaid for the previous fiscal year. There might be a few others, but it looks like we'll probably be around like 10 or 11 warrants once everything's done.
And we've already got the date reserved with the school, or do we still need to check that?
Not yet, no.
Is the scenic roads bylaw ready?
Excuse me?
I'd be very keen to see the bylaw on the special town meeting warrant if it's timely for.
The scenic roads bylaw?
Yes.
No, it's still in a draft form.
It enables us to go forward. We've got the naming bylaw, scenic roads.
Right.
No, there's separate issues, but we need a plan.
Right. We've, we've had a couple of meetings on that, and Randall and Ron have both been involved in those. But no, we're still in a draft form, so it won't be ready for the specials. If we'd had special a little bit later, maybe, but we'll have it definitely for the Maytown meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But I can send you a draft to where we are if you want, Stephen.
Well, the question of getting a proposal for new, into the pipeline.
Okay, for new scenic roads, is that what you're saying?
Right, right.
Okay. Robert, yes, go ahead.
Robert Floyd, Town Moderator, College Highway. I just want to review our dates ahead so that we're on the same page. Next Tuesday is the deadline for the articles to be submitted. If you keep your Tuesday meeting schedule, you'd be meeting the Tuesday after that, the 2nd of September. That's the day meeting you need to look at the articles and sign the warrant. You can, if we run out of time on the 2nd, you have the 9th to meet and sign the warrant. The warrant needs to be posted. I'm looking at the 15th of September to be comfortable. So it's two weeks ahead of the special town meeting on the 30th. I will have.
To post on the.
I will have a Town Moderator Special Town Meeting Information Session. I'm looking at the 18th on Thursday, but I haven't checked with Lucy yet to see if the room is available. But I'll figure that out tomorrow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Next up, Building Department, some change of fees for the Building Department?
So I asked, with the changeover in the Plumbing and Gas Inspector, I asked Ron to take a look at where our current fees are for the Building Department. So he was able to do an analysis with some neighboring towns, North Hampton, East Hampton, Halffield, Hadley, Granby, and a couple other towns. And he proposed these changes, which would put us in the neighborhood of everyone else. It hasn't been updated in about eight to nine years, so we're a little bit past due. And I did request all the departments to look at their fees last budget cycle, but we did get a little bit distracted, so we weren't able to cover it. So, you know, it, what I think is, you know, it doesn't radically increase it a lot. I think it's more, you know, it's keeping with the market. But obviously, with the, the cost of everything rises, we need to also cover our costs as well.
So these are being proposed to us to vote on tonight to ratify these recommendations? Okay. And I believe, I checked with Ron, we actually did approve separately the revision of fees for the electrical inspections last year in 2024. So the electrical has been done, but apparently the building fees themselves and the plumbing fees have not been done in eight to 10 years. So my understanding is, in addition to these, tonight, he would also be working on revising the plumbing inspection fees, especially since we will have a new plumbing inspector coming on? Is that right?
Yes, he'll, he'll take a look at that, and probably also the reimbursement as well for our inspectors. Most of our inspectors are on on-call, so electrical, plumbing, you know, we don't have enough volume to support a permanent part-time or full-time.
These receipts, whether current or proposed, go into a revolving fund? Or do they go straight into general revenues?
These go right into the general fund.
Well, there's requests on the floor, so if we're ready, I would make a motion to approve the proposed fee schedule as presented.
Second that.
Okay. Okay, I hear a second. If no further discussion. It seems like it's way over time to get these updated over the last 10 years. So we might have, we might have lost a penny or two that we could have used. So let's get these up to what our neighbors are doing, and hopefully we can keep the department running well with good inspectors and getting all the work done on time. So with that, let's take a vote. All those in favor?
No, a particle of discussion, it's with real regret that we have to raise fees and expenses on our neighbors and ourselves. But I'm all for getting us up to par and not missing appropriate opportunities to generate a small amount of revenue badly needed for the town. So I am in support of the motion, and I'm not trying to put off the vote.
Yeah. And honestly, I don't know how often one normally, towns would raise their fees. I assume it's maybe every five years or something. It's not very frequently. But I think we've, we've probably overstayed our, our timeframe.
Market-driven? Yeah, it's been, it's been a long time by any measure.
Right. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please?
Johnson, aye.
DeBruin, aye.
Falls aye. Okay, the motion passes, and we will adopt these new building fees and get them posted on the website. Thank you very much. Next one up, surplus equipment from the Highway Department. Apparently, there's a generator that needs to be disposed of.
I'm not sure if it's running or not, but Randall wants to get rid of it. I think it's missing a fuel cap. But we've, we've actually made a lot of progress this townwide in cleaning out a lot of stuff. Judy just sold another truck for about $4,000.
Great.
It was like an 86 or something like that. I guess the square bodies are pretty, pretty well in demand, so. But also, if you ever get, if you get a moment, take a trip downstairs into the hallway. Dave and the Highway Department, everyone's, they've done a great job cleaning it up. It's actually a professional-looking space now. All the garbage is gone except for a few minor things. And then Dave also refurbished the, the studio, which is going to be able to be functioning as an office. So we can actually get the Conservation Agent his own place now and for actual storage. And then we can kind of make the third-floor room look a little bit better, so.
Wonderful.
Great. Okay, so let's have a motion then to declare this Highway Department equipment as surplus property?
I move that we declare the Onan Diesel Generator surplus.
I'll second that.
All right. And again, all those in favor?
Johnson, aye.
DeBruin, aye.
Falls aye. Okay. We will pass it on to Judy to do her thing and do her magic and get it advertised and disposed of. Very good. Next up, land use planning updates.
See, I don't know, Stephen, I don't know if you were able to stop by the Dotson Flinker offices or not. I don't have anything on that.
So two weeks ago, following our interest group meeting to provide feedback on sort of the final two competing visions, I did sit down with them for about an hour. And it was very productive. I agree with a lot of what you had all processed, and that's why I didn't necessarily have a vote to give you in real time. Sorry, I was remotely available and not with you in the room. But I think the ideas are evolving well. We're in summer hiatus. We do have a question on the table, Scott, about the format for the final report. And I think we suffer also from a vacation schedule, but the three of us who are in the contract team should figure out what we consider an appropriate final report. But it is now time for them to really distill it into one proposal that they develop deeply, both in terms of the visualization of the development and some fair specifics about what goes where down to the details of some of the amenities. You know, the picnic shed here and walking paths extend to here and provide these kinds of opportunities. So we really do need to think about what form of product, paper, electronic simulation, or more of a presentation, would serve as better combination. So that's the update I have. I would say the Housing Authority forges ahead, and having made progress on the property that they own, getting that out to bid with an RFP, they're revved up and ready to get things in place for a housing program and assist with the necessary prerequisites to get there.
Yeah, I know Bradley's working on that, so.
Great.
Yeah. This is, this is the property, just for clarity, down on College Highway, across from the golf course?
Yeah, so 358, I think, is the number.
Great, so the RFP has gone out on that?
I think it's ready to go out, or very close to it. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Glad to hear that. Okay. Good. Actually, one thing, speaking of RFPs, I'm sorry, I could have reported this under my grant hat here. There is an RFP out on the street, right, Scott, for the Old Town Hall renovation, the exterior renovation? We had gotten a grant from the National Historical Association and PVPC combined. National Park Service, I believe, is involved in it. And so we have a grant for $96,000 to re-point the mortar on the exterior of the Old Town Hall Police Station area. And that grant has been awarded, and then Bradley has worked to get the RFP out on the street. So in early September, we'll have the bid opening and figure out who can actually do that job. And again, this is just to keep the, the outside building in shape so that it doesn't keep on crumbling away on us. Okay. Next up, ARPA financial report. Bradley's put together the financials in terms of how everybody has been reporting their, their expenses. Most of the projects, I will say, combining this with the quarterly tracker that Judy keeps updated, everybody pretty much has been turning in their quarterly progress reports and status reports. And we have, I think, only four or five active open projects right now with, you know, not too much money left to, to be spent. The financial report, I still do want to spend a little bit more time and go through compared to what I've been noting and what Bradley's noted because I'm, I'm still trying to track down a couple of these where the asset management grant that Randall was, was working on for his culvert study. If you recall, we had to appropriate the entire amount of like about $140,000, but then $84,000 of it was due to be reimbursed to us from a grant. And I've been able to find the first tranche of that money, about 58,000 has come in, but I'm still trying to double-check. I'm wondering if the 25,000 ever came in from the state. So this is reimbursement that is due to us from the state, and sometimes they don't. And sometimes they don't label them very well. So at some point when I'm down next week, I'll, I'll just try and catch maybe Megan first and then Bradley, just to see if we've got it recorded somewhere, just to be sure that we did get our reimbursement on that. But we're, we're kind of winding down. I'll get some updated information ready and get it up on the website hopefully next week. But ARPA's been moving along fairly well, I think. So anybody have any questions on anything about ARPA at all? Okay. Where are we? 250th anniversary. Well, the next big thing is Saturday night. If you haven't heard about it, you may not have been listening too well, but next Saturday night is the big birthday party. That is the actual day of the birthday of the town of Southampton. So Celebrate Southampton was its own thing, which is our annual event. And as I said before, a huge celebration. And this time we actually have a, a double sort of back-to-back celebration. So this is the actual birthday of the town and we'll be getting together between 5:00 and 8:00 PM at Conan Park with the Buddy McCurnans Band. And we've got Vera Crozana Food Truck as well as Ice Cream Emergency and 250 cupcakes and all sorts of things going on. So won't be quite as active in many ways in terms of, you know, other activities like Celebrate Southampton was, but it should be a very fun evening. So come and enjoy the music. Everybody's welcome. All you've got to do is come on in and grab some food, maybe from Vera Crozana, but the music's free, the ice cream is free till it runs out, and the cupcakes are free until they run out. So anyway, we've had a lot of volunteers that have put this together and in advance, thank you to all of them for, for doing that, from making a cupcake stand to making cupcakes to all sorts of things. So we really hope to have a fun evening. And Buddy McCurnans, if you haven't heard him, is a local band, one of our local residents who's known around the valley, does a lot of rhythm and blues and jazz. So it should be a great evening. So hopefully the weather will cooperate and we will see you there. But this will be one of our big events, I'd say, for the 250th. Okay. Is there any other business that can't wait until our next regular select boarding, board meeting on September 2nd?
I just want to acknowledge the letter that John had sent. So John, John Lumber is looking to disclose his position with Dowd Insurance and how it might relate to potential conflicts with the town's health insurance. I think that we, we need to, you know, dive into it a little bit more, just make sure with the Ethics Commission, Dowd is such a huge entity, I don't see any problem of John excluding himself from that process and obviously keeping everything on the up and up. I don't think that's going to be a problem. I just, it does probably require a little bit more dotting the i's and crossing the d's just to make sure everything. But I think they've, they've been volunteering their time so far and, you know, they're obviously a great resource and John knows his stuff about health insurance, so. And I've worked with Steve Corbin as well in previous positions, so they are, they are a great company. But we're not even anywhere near that financial brokerage, anything like that so far. So we've got quite a little bit more time before we do that.
Right. So my understanding is that you're still at an information gathering stage and John is contributing pro bono his experience and perspective, not providing services through Dowd Insurance.
Right.
And it's quite some time before we have clarity about what our options are for insurance and that at that time, if there was a conflict, then John would recuse himself from both discussion and voting.
Absolutely.
So he's got his eye on it and he's very intent on being transparent, but given that this is his day job, I mean, this is the domain in which he works daily. Being scrupulous is appropriate, so.
No, I think both that and combined with his being a numbers guy, I think we're very fortunate to have his, his expertise and him volunteering to, to help out and help analyze.
Many times, yeah.
Yeah. You know, it's, we've got a lot of, a lot of challenges before us with the insurance costs, so hopefully we can find a way forward. All right, good.
We've covered that. The related item is John has several times raised the question whether it's such a fiasco with our current insurance provider, the trust, that it would be appropriate to send a letter of no confidence in the trustees, or a letter of more particular concern that they're not serving their fiduciary responsibility to the ratepayers. Some confusion about trying to preserve the entity versus serve the ratepayers. And I don't know whether John has provided a draft or further discussed that with you, Scott, but it sounded appropriate to me, given 20% on topic, 20%.
Actually, on that, so I did, we did get an invitation earlier from Doug in the West Hampton Sec Board to do a summit on such a topic. I was going to formally forward it to you later on, but.
Sounds more effective than a letter.
Yep. So West Hampton is willing to host the summit and all executive boards from each town. I think that might be a better way to pull all of our influence.
Great.
So.
I think on the original, yeah. I think, Scott, on the, on the call that you had that day that there was a vote, there were several, several communities that were involved in that, right? So, I mean, I think many of them were not very happy with the whole notion, but it didn't seem like there was much choice, right?
Unfortunately, changes like health insurance take, you know, six to 12 months on a fast-paced schedule. So to do something in 30 days would be nearly impossible.
Right. Yep. Okay. All right, so we'll wait to hear more about that if, you know, if we can find a good time scheduling it with West Hampton. That sounds like a good idea. So, very good. We did put in our, our letters, we did write to, to the Governor's Office and copied Senator Veles and Rep. Pease, so we have gone on record just expressing our displeasure, but that's maybe not as much as we might do, so. All right. We will be getting, I guess, on the town accountant contract, Scott, we will be looking at that in executive session and most likely coming back after we have voted on that. I assume we'll come back to public session, Scott, is that right?
Yeah, if, if you wanted to approve the contract for the town accountant, yeah.
Okay, all right. So then let's skip over that and we'll go right to the PCFs. We have, I think, just one, is that correct?
Yeah, the fire chief asked to take off the Corey Lang one.
Okay. So if someone would make a motion around the Highway Department, one?
Do you like to read?
Make a motion to.
Highway Department.
Make a motion to appoint Stephen Webster, the Highway Department, the new hire, as a temporary laborer, looks like a 12-week appointment, none benefited at $21.20, $21.20 an hour. Make a motion, make a motion, we make that appointment.
Second.
All right. Any clarity on that, Scott? Is this, this is one that Randall has been hoping to recruit or?
This is just a temporary labor, so it's for at most 12 months, just to kind of help out with some of the old, older items that are kind of lingering out there.
12 weeks.
12 weeks, yeah. We don't have a lot of, unfortunately, we haven't had a lot of success. We have tried recruiting for temporary seasonal labors in the past without success and this one just happened to come a little bit later in the season, so.
All right. Okay, so again, all those in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Johnson, aye.
Brew, an aye.
Foul's aye. All right. That's approved, very good.
Next up.
And we have one license, yep.
I move that we approve a one-day wine and malt license for Andrew LaJoy Jr. to be used at Conan Park Saturday, September 6th, 2025, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM for a birthday party.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Yeah, it looks like all the paperwork has been supplied through the Park Department. So with that, all those in favor?
Johnson, aye.
Brew, an aye.
Foul's aye. Okay, it's approved, thank you. And Stephen, your favorite time, our warrants.
Yes, here we go. We've got a few of them. Warrant P. 25-54 in the amount of $52,403.17. P. 26-22 is in the amount of $281,358.53. P. D. 26-2 is in the amount of $55,091.10. P. D. 26-4, the amount is $56,444.64. P. D. 26-4A, the amount is $276,392.87. P. D. 26-4A1 is in the amount of $8,256.60. And that's what I've got.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, under Old Business, any updates on the FY '23 and/or '24 audit, Scott?
Yeah, so I did reach out to Tanya again. She got back to me earlier this afternoon and she says it would be ready. Where did it go? She apologizes, she's hoping that she can have this wrapped up by the end of next week.
This is the '23?
The '23, yep. And on the '24, we're still holding steady. Most of the stuff that we've been completing, we're just waiting for the Treasury Department to kind of dig out from where they are right now, so. But with Angie back on board, I think they'll be able to do it pretty quickly.
Okay. Well, maybe if they can set themselves, you know, four or five things to do every week, I don't know if that helps, but something that they can really focus on and try to get whatever information they need over to, to Markham, that would be great. So if she's going to have the '23 done, then we're going to need to schedule her at some point to come in to Select Board and present those findings. We'll have to find time, September might be a crowded month. Stephen, were you going to say something?
No, you anticipated what I wanted to do is get on our mutual calendars that review. If they're one week away from completion, I'd like to be two or not more than four weeks away from a meeting where we review a management letter. I mean, it's hard to spare the time, except that we're very much in a learning curve here as to what sorts of things we need to do better in the financial management and oversight.
Right. Tentatively, let me, let me just say that maybe we could aim for September 16th. That would be a possibility. Otherwise, I think it would have to wait until after the town meeting, till early October, but.
Terribly busy.
Let's, let's see how things flow. Yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else, Scott, in terms of other things on the Old Business, the ADA door openers, Stormwater Enterprise Fund?
Waiting for those to come in. We did set up a home people account, so that should make things a little bit easier for Dave to get some stuff. Took half a day, but I won't even go there. But, yeah, so we should be all set with that, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, so.
Okay. All right. Good. So we do basically have select board meetings for September. It's a long month, so we have September 2nd, September 16th, and September 30th as our meeting dates. And other than that, we will be going into executive session tonight. We have two, sorry?
Maybe just for the record, we also have that joint meeting with the Finance Committee on the 9th.
Ah, yes, correct.
Previously mentioned, but not.
Correct, thank you, September 9.
Yeah.
September 9. Right, thank you.
It is busy.
Yep. It will be, yeah. That's fine. Okay, very good. So we will be going into executive session and most likely returning from that executive session into public session. And we'll give East Hampton Media a heads up once we do that. So we are going into executive session based on MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, health insurance. And then MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And this is regarding the town accountant. So with that, could I have a motion to adjourn our regular meeting, go into executive session? And again, we will be most likely coming back after our short executive session, I hope. So a motion to move forward.
Make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and go into executive session this time.
Second.
All right. Okay, all those in favor?
Johnson, aye.
Brew, an aye.
Foul's aye. Okay, we are adjourned temporarily at least at 6:45 PM and we will come back in as soon as we're ready. Okay. All right, so the Select Board is returning from its executive session and we just have one, one announcement to make in the public forum, and that is that we have just approved a contract with our current town accountant, Bradley Oxon. And this is a contract from the end of September, September 27th, 2024, until June 30th, 2027. So we have been working with Bradley for a couple of years now and we would like to continue on until the end of '27 with this particular contract. So that was our decision. The board has all voted unanimously in that effect. And that is all we have for tonight. So with that, I believe we can.
A formal vote in open session.
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My mistake, yes. Okay, so let's have a vote. I'm sorry that. Yeah, sorry. September 27th, 2024 to June 30th, 2027, even though we did discuss this in exec, yes, let's vote it in open session. Sorry, my, my mistake.
I've moved that we approve a contract for that time period with town accountant Bradley Oxon.
Second then.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye with a roll call vote.
Johnson, aye.
Brew, an aye.
Foul's aye. Okay, the contract is approved, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad.
And we will sign off on that. Very good. And I think that concludes our meeting tonight. I'm not aware of any other business that we have, so I will take a motion to adjourn the Select Board meeting.
Move for adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right. And all those in favor?
Johnson, aye.
Brew, an aye.
Foul's aye. And we are adjourned at about 7:20 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.